We'll call this meeting to order to Black Dog County Board of Supervisors for July 26, 2022. Roll call, please.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Trelka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment in silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received? The opposed was amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The opposed, mostly carried. Public comments? Don't see anybody out there. Anybody online, any public comments they want to make before we move on? Hearing none. Claims and payments, Mr. Perry?
Our expenditures this week total 2,751,016.93, of which there was a Grundy Road payment in the amount of 1,886,100. The Health Department totals 38,942, Sheriff's Department 77,215, and there was an insurance renewal that we approved in the amount of 563,455.
Thank you, James.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Trelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. This week, our crews are out mowing, spraying weeds, and hauling rack. We have completed our first 10 miles of rack hauling in each greater district on the gravel road system. We're starting to work on the second 10 miles in each district now. Our contract construction projects are going well. Our bridges and our roadways are all going well. And Washburn Road is currently closed this week, and it's in the vicinity of the landfill. We've worked with the landfill so they can reroute their regular customers to get around the construction. We have to replace a culvert on Washburn Road, so that we're anticipating that should be done by the end of this week, while they're permitting. Can I answer any questions about any projects? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Morning, Mike.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Mike Hendrickson, Director of County Conservation. It's always amazing how quickly great news becomes old news. Very quickly, but I'm going to mention it anyway. As most of all of you know, we were awarded our Destination Iowa grant last week. We were very excited about that, and it was to the tune of about 1.4 million to be used on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, actually the southern 9.44 miles of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Again, that will finish our section of the hard surfacing. That's the remaining chipstone portion that has been there for 40 years almost. We've been trying to get that done, so we're going to get that done. There is one bridge involved, and it will be a replacement, not a repair. So that's figured into the total cost, and a couple of culverts and some erosion. So that was an event that we partnered with Lynn County, so they're quite thrilled, too. So they'll be bringing their six and a half miles north, and we'll be taking our nine and a half miles south, and we will put the trail together. So just wanted to bring that up today. Any questions at all?
Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
For sure.
Morning.
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Emmerich with Black Hawk County Health. I just wanted to do a short COVID update. On last Friday, July 22, the CDC updated our community level for Black Hawk County to medium. So this means that if you're at high risk for severe illness, you're advised to talk to your healthcare provider about whether you need to wear a mask and take other precautions. And then the regular recommendations that are under law still are in effect, so get tested if you're having symptoms and stay up to date with your COVID vaccines. We are seeing a rate that is borderline to the high community level, so we are preparing for our community level to go to high at the next update, which will happen on Thursday. At the high community level, that's when masking in indoor places is recommended by the CDC.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online? Hearing none. Moving on to minutes approved for July 19, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carried. Next is consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Trelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a contract that the contract extension between Black Hawk County and the Cedar Van Humane Society effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, for basic animal care services at the rate of $27,834.36 per year. That's an increase of 2,000, or on average of $2,319.53 a month, with an annual increase of 1% for the contract fees for unincorporated areas of Black Hawk County be approved, directed, chartered, signed for same, and received and placed on file certificate of insurance with the county auditor. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes. I was going to say, I hope there is. I know she's attending the meeting, so I hope she was going to review some of the information with us, and if we had any questions. Is that correct, Kristi?
Yes. Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Basically, I just, you know, we haven't touched base in person for a couple of years. Some things have changed in our world. I know Carla Beckman is the one that kind of dealt with a lot of your files and stuff, and she's no longer here. I sent you a few reports that we had. You know, your animal numbers have increased by about, oh, I would say about 53 animals from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22. I kind of ran some reports for the last year, and I'd sent those to you, but your cats are still your bigger numbers. I know last year, out of 143 animals, 115 of those were cats and kittens. 28 of them were dogs. Out of those 115 cats, we were able to place 73 of them into homes. 11 of them came in that were, they pretty much died upon arrival. You know, you have a lot of injured cats that people bring in. 27 of them we had to euthanize due to sickness or injury, and four of them we were able to, you know, put into barn homes. They weren't really sick, but they weren't cats that we could place into, you know, into homes due to they weren't litter trained or something like that. So your dogs, we had 28 dogs that came from the county. 15 of them we adopted into homes. Two of them we had to euthanize due to aggression, and 11 of them went home to their owners. So one of the things I'd kind of like to propose to you guys is change how we give you your reports. I kind of looked through how the standard way we give you your reports and your billing every year is we send you everything we pick up. The numbers I just gave you are kind of a combination between animals we pick up and animals that the community brings into us. I think we can give you a little bit better detailed report now with the new computer system that we have, so every month you'll get, obviously, your billing on what we pick up, but I think I would like to have you guys have on a monthly basis, so you can see, kind of like the numbers I just gave you on month to month, so that way you'll just be able to see, this is how many animals that came in from the public. Granted, this is what you're billed for, for what we pick up, and then what happens to them. If you're not interested in that, you know, I won't have my assistants go to the, you know, setting that up, but I personally feel even for myself, looking back, that's good information to have from year to year, and we do provide that now for like the city of Cedar Falls or Waterloo. So any questions on your end or thoughts from the board?
I guess my question, Kristi, I noticed in some of the reports that there are several that come from the same addresses. I'm assuming then that's the same individuals collecting the animals for you and bringing them in, or for us?
Like, are they different numbers? Are they, a lot of times, what that is, is that's like multiple kittens. So what they'll do is they'll find a litter of kittens and they'll bring them in. You know, we don't go out in the community. I mean, there's so many like barn cats and stray cats out there. We don't go in, out, and collect that. The only time we really get the cats or the kittens is if they're injured or sick. You know, so a lot of times we're able to rehabilitate those very quickly or very easily, so we're able to place them into homes. But, you know, that's kind of where the euthanasia numbers or what have you. So the ones that come from the same address, what you're probably seeing is, like, for an example, if I just look at your report, you have a couple that have come from like 5907 Third Street in Doer. Those, they came in, if you look, you'll see the date. They came in on the same date, or even a day or two, you know, difference. A lot of times, they're from the same litter, so.
I think, and it was just throughout the report, I'd see sometimes the same addresses come out.
Yeah.
So it was.
And we kind of watch that, just because, like I said, what we don't want to do is, we're not really contracted to go out and collect everybody's barn cats, you know. Obviously, that's not what you're paying for, and, you know, we, as a shelter, we don't want that either. We don't want all those animals just brought in. One thing we do offer now, we do have a veterinarian on staff, and he does all of our in-house spay and neuters, and we also offer that to the public. And that is actually kind of helps reduce some of the cats coming in from the county. They have to pay for that service, so a lot of times, people that get overwhelmed with barn cats, they used to just collect them all up, bring them to us and say, hey, they're strays. Well, now we offer spay-neuter services for them for $45 a cat. Of course, like I said, that's their responsibility, but a lot of people, they'll bring them in, they'll get them fixed, a rabies vaccination for that cost, and take them back out to their farms. I think that just kind of helps that service at that price, so they don't get so overwhelmed with cats, and they're not trying to bring them all in as strays.
Kristi, we've had a lot of discussion over the years. We've got multiple addresses. Particular one on Independence Avenue that collects cats all summer and goes south in the wintertime and brings them all to the year facility, and then the county's charged, the contract doesn't cover that. The county's charged for each one, is that correct?
If they bring them in as strays, that's correct.
Yeah. And see, there's multiple addresses. There's one on Whedon Road that does the same thing, bring in 12, 13 cats. The county pays for those individual cats, and it's not covered under the contract.
Right. Well, you know, one thing, I guess I don't know how to do this within the city, but one thing, you know, Tom, we kind of have a new program that we're going to be trying with the city of Waterloo. It's called a community cat program. That might be something, if you ever have time, we should have a discussion. That might help prevent some of that. Basically, what we'll be doing is, you know, there's so many community cats that roam out in the city that really aren't house cats. They live out there, people feed them, and then, you know, somebody kind of gets a wild hair, and they try to collect them and bring them in as strays. Well, that's taxing on our shelter, that's expensive for the cities, it's expensive for us, it's not good for the animals. So we're creating a program where if an animal comes in where we feel it's a community cat, where it's not, you know, actually a lost pet or an injured pet, we can spay, neuter it, and then we can take it back out there. And what we do is we ear tip that cat, so then let's say, a couple of months down the road, somebody calls Animal Control, or they say, hey, this is a stray cat we want to bring in. If it's got an ear tip, then it's basically identified as we know it's vaccinated, it's spayed or neutered, and it is considered, what the city would consider, a community cat. So it's basically allowed to be back out there, so we won't take it back in, unless it's injured, of course. So that might be something that we should talk about, Tom, because that might help eventually reduce the amount of cats that come to us, or it would kind of help those people that, you know, want to do that will be like, well, they're already fixed. Granted, they'll come through one time, but we'll fix them and turn them back out where they came from. Obviously, if they're healthy, they're surviving well out there. If they're not healthy, then they can't handle being out there, they're not being supported, but, so then we don't do that, but.
You don't.
I think it'll help reduce the numbers eventually.
You don't pick up anything after 5 o'clock, is that correct?
That's correct.
So a deputy has to, if he picks up, say, a dog, he has to personally take it out to your facility, unlock the door, put the dog away, and so forth, is that correct?
Yes. We have a holding facility just specifically for that with a kennel for them.
Is that utilized a lot?
I'm sorry, what?
Is that utilized a lot?
Not very often by the county. On occasion, I think it was just, what, a week or two ago, I think they brought us three dogs out from the county that they brought in, so.
I guess my last question, Kristi, is really regarding the cost, as far as how you determine the annual, or I know we pay it monthly, because it looks like the contract would be for equal payments, and it doesn't include, I guess, the number of animals that are collected, so whether it would be 100 or whether it's the 150, it's the same cost. So I was curious as how you determine that cost, then?
So if we have to go out and pick up an animal, then we charge you for us to go out. Otherwise, your annual cost basically covers, you know, all those animals that the public brings in that they find as strays, you know, and that might be something that, you know, we discussed down the road. I know the cities have changed to where we charge them per animal in the holding fee. In the long run, sometimes that ends up costing more, because, you know, when you get more animals in, obviously, you're charged more. To be completely honest, I think this contract has been this way for so many years. You know, we haven't really went back and revisited as far as if they're, you know, you want changes or you don't want changes. For the amount of animals that we take in, you know, we don't, we haven't really upped your contract a whole bunch. You know, obviously, we hold any strays that come in for five days, so keep in mind, you know, even if, let's say, somebody picks up an injured cat off the street that's a stray, it comes in, we treat that animal or keep it comfortable, we hold it for five days. So that's kind of what your contract covers, those initial vaccinations, those five days holding if they need any medical. Once we determine that no owner is coming and it belongs to the Humane Society and we're going to put it up for adoption, then anything past that is on the Humane Society's bill. You know, that's what donors pay for, microchips, spaying and neutering, you know, getting them ready for adoption. But your cost covers those five days of care, food, you know, care, shelter, vaccines, that kind of thing.
Not the contract. That's all separate.
What's that?
That cost you're talking about when that individual brings 13 cats, and that doesn't cover it under the contract. We pay that individually, correct?
No, that's your overall contract. The only thing that you pay individual, that we charge you separate from your contract, Tom, is when we have to go out and pick up an animal. And we're very choosy on that, because, you know, we don't want to charge you to go pick up somebody's barn cat. So really, we only usually go out and pick up if the sheriff department calls us, or if it's a injured animal, or an animal that is bitten, you know, something like that, that we feel is going to be a safety hazard. If somebody calls us and they say, hey, we have three stray cats sitting here on our porch, and we live out in the county, we don't go out and pick those up. They can bring them in if they're strays, but then we don't charge you extra. That's included in that contract. The only time you get that pickup fee, that monthly charge, is if we go out and have to pick up an animal.
How many do you actually pick up roughly, estimated in a month, that you pick up?
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask me that, and I thought, dang it, I didn't pull that. I don't know. Probably, I would say, we don't usually pick up a ton, maybe five or six, sometimes more, sometimes less, but like I said, we were very, it's not that we don't want to do it, but we don't want to charge you for, like I said, to go out and pick up people's barn cats, you know.
Do we, wouldn't it be cheaper then for the county, rather than paying a flat fee plus extra by just paying per animal when it was picked up?
Possibly, Tom. I would have to figure that out, but, you know, you figure, the city of Cedar Falls, they, right now, before their increase, they pay $90 an animal. So I mean, I would have to figure that. And, you know, what we'd have to do is we would have to look at how many animals come in from your county, and, you know, what that would cost you. Another thing, you know, you guys, we hold your animals for five days. You know, now the city of Waterloo, they only have us hold their animals for three days, so then that reduces their cost, obviously, a little bit. Cedar Falls, we still hold their animals for five days. So it just kind of depends on the preference with the cities.
Okay, then you said, I mean, the last time I've talked to you guys, the last contract, if that individual brings 13 cats, and I was told at that time, we had to pay individually for each cat, that wasn't under the current contract. You're saying it is covered?
Correct. That's what your annual contract is for, yes. That is covered in that. If we have to go pick them up, then yes, we charge you for each individual animal. So the contract that you pay us, that annual contract, that monthly that you pay us, that flat fee, that covers all those animals that come in. That is what you're paying for. And in a sense, you know, it's for the facility, for the care of the animals, for the medications, for the vaccines, you know, for the boarding, you know, all of that. If we go out and we pick up the animal, then we charge, we charge that pickup fee because we had to go out and get that.
Even during the regular hours?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm not so sure we shouldn't take a seriously look at individually paying for, because I can't imagine we got that many in the rural area that come in. You talk about the Cedar Falls or the Waterloo, I can understand their animal control, but I can't imagine that we pull that many animals in from the rural area.
Well, like, your contract covers that 115 animals, you know, that comes in, or anything that we get called up to pick up. But, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's something that, you know, before next contract, you know, maybe we should sit down and figure those numbers, so.
I think this contract's for, what, two years or three years?
Hmm, three years.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, I think we should go one year at a time, so we can take a look at it and see where to go from there.
Yeah. No, and I'm not opposed to that. We can always re-figure that. So like I said, for us, you know, just keep in mind, you know, it's, we just have to have the cost covered per the animal, and it's not just the vaccination, you know, we have to have the facility to hold the animal, and the licensing to be able to do it, and, you know, so all that's figured into that, so. But, I mean, you know, if you break that down per animal, and I apologize, I don't know what that is right off the bat, but I mean, that's something we certainly, you know, can do. Like I said, the city of Cedar Falls, they, right now, they pay us $90 an animal. So for every animal that comes in, they pay $90, and I know that's going to go up by 3%, just because, you know, with everything, you know, even our cost of vaccinations, we have to give every animal that comes through the door a vaccine to even hold it. You know, all of that stuff has gone up over the last year, just like everything else in the world has, so. But we've taken a considerable increase in things like that, so.
So that would be if the county, we averaged five a month, like you indicated, that would be $450 a month.
But keep in mind, that's maybe five a month we pick up. That's not five a month total that comes from your county. So you guys have two different, you have animals that people call, and we'll go pick them up, and that may only be, like I said, three or four, five or six a month, but that is a total what comes in that people bring in. Your contract that you pay, that that's just that standard across, that covers the care of every animal that comes through our door from the county. The pickup fee that we charge you, in addition to that every month, if you look at your bill, those are the ones we actually go pick up, and what we do is we just basically charge you a pickup fee for us to go pick it up. But if we don't go pick up any animals, then all we, and everybody brings them to us, all you pay is your contract. You don't pay any additional pickup fee. So if you look at your monthly bill, there's some months that it's a little higher than others, because we charge you, like, what is it, the $25 pickup fee for us to drive out in the county and get the animal. And basically, that's just to cover our staff and our vehicle. I mean, that doesn't, that's, you're not paying for the animal additionally, you're paying for us to go get it. Does that kind of make better sense?
So it sounds like you're certainly receptive to working with us to take a better look or a closer look and seeing if this plan works better for us, or to do it something different.
I mean, we do that all the time. We do that with the cities, you know, so we're continually, you know, looking. I mean, like I said, I'm not opposed to that. I haven't sat down, just because we haven't talked about, you know, changing it to figure out what it would cost per animal, you know. So, I mean, that, we would, I would just have to figure that. I'd have to take into consideration, you know, the insurance we cover and the building, you know, and the medical, and, you know, we would have to take all that into consideration, what it would cost us to do, you know, each animal. But, no, I'm not opposed to doing that at all. I mean, like I said, we do that with the cities all the time, so.
Does a one-year contract make sense that forces us all, I guess, to have those discussions, or to kind of have more discussion on it, rather than three years?
Can you table it?
I was just thinking we could table it, but then we don't. We go without services if we needed the services of them in place. I think that was effective July 1. Chris or Tom, any thoughts?
I think we ought to go one year at a time and kind of reevaluate. When I worked on this three years ago, I know the sheriff's department had some concerns on their pickups at night and delivery and everything, and they weren't actually, I don't want to say too happy, but there was some major concerns that were never addressed by the board. So I'm not so sure if we just shouldn't go one year and then try to figure out what's our cheapest cost and get the numbers from them, so forth. Mike, I'm still a little confused, because when I worked on this a few years ago, I think I counted seven different addresses. One on Whedon Road, Independence Avenue, where they brought in 13, 14 cats at a time, because they were going south, and they're cats they collected and fed all summer. And I was under impression, I was told, when we talked about this, that we paid for each one of those cats, and it wasn't covered in the contract.
Well, you do pay for those cats, but we don't charge you above and beyond the contract, if that makes sense. So I don't know if we had to pick them up or not, Tom. I don't know.
No, they were brought, they were brought in.
Yeah. And as far as the sheriff's department, you know, that is true, and I would be open to those conversations. Kind of some of the things that we ran into, it was frustrating for us. So like, for an example, we got a call, and this has been several years ago, we got a call on the weekend by the sheriff's department, and they were out in the county. I feel like it was Lepore, but I don't hold me to that. It's been a couple, few years ago. And it was an owned dog. I mean, it was somebody's dog. It bit a family member, and it wouldn't let them in the house. And it was their own dog. So they called us, and they said, you need to come get this dog. Well, we're not contracted to pick up owner surrenders for the county. Like, that's not anywhere in your contract. You know, in your contract, it specifically says you want us to get strays. You do not want us to go, you know, get owned animals, and, you know, the people are like, we don't want the dog anymore because it bites. So in a sense, we would have been charging you guys to go out to the house, get this dog, then we have to hold it because it bit, so then we have to charge you a quarantine. So I guess, you know, I'm completely open. It's not that we don't want to help the sheriff's department, but I think we just have to be very clear on what it is you guys want to pay for, what you want us to do. So I know they got really angry with us, because they're like, well, what are we supposed to do with the dog? And I'm like, well, I mean, technically, that's the owner's responsibility, and I understand that the dog had bit them or whatever, but I guess those are some questions that we have for, you know, the county. It's like, is that covered under our contract? Is that something you want us doing? So those are the types of things that the sheriff's department used to get quite angry with us about. If they would call us and say, hey, we have a stray dog out here that bit somebody, we need help, obviously, of course, we would go, no questions asked. But those aren't the types of calls that we were getting. But those aren't the types of calls that we were getting. And so, you know, then, and I get why they were frustrated, but but you kind of see where we were in, you know, we, we, how do we respond to that? We're, we're not contracted to go deal with somebody's personal dog. That, that's not part of your contract, and I'm assuming you don't want to be paying for people giving up all their pets either, so. Kind of like, you know, the cats, like, how do we know, you know, obviously, what you're saying, Tom, is those cats belong to those people, and they're bringing them in a strays, you know?
They're just feeding, they're just feeding them all summer, and then when they go south, they just collect them all and bring them into the
Right.
here facility. And like I said, I think I counted six different locations throughout the county that do that.
Yeah. And, and then how do you decide, you know, like, when they come to us, it's like, okay, are they strays? Do they belong to them? You know, I mean, that kind of thing, so. If, if it's an owned animal, then we charge people, I mean, people have to pay for their own pets, you know? So, so those are just some of the questions and some of the conversations that, you know, yes, I agree, we need to have because it's not that we don't want to help the sheriff's department, but basically, they're calling us to do services that we're not contracted with the county to do. So, I, I mean, I guess, you know, we need to know from the county that it's like, you know, do you want us responding to calls? Is the county going to be responsible for paying for calls like that? You know, I, I guess those would be my questions, or I don't know what your thoughts are, but.
On this report that you talk about to changing or the new report, I noticed on the old one, like I said, you had some comments on there, I think, about some animals that were in traps. But as far as the, the ones when you talk about the report, will it note pickups and some of that new information so that we get that on a monthly basis? We can be looking at that and evaluating that, too?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think if we can do a report similar to what we send to the city, you know, it's a little bit more thorough. It'll, it'll separate out animals that we went and picked up, animals that were brought in from the public, what happened to them, you know, were they euthanized, were they adopted out? I, I guess I don't know if you're interested in that or not, but it'll, it'll, the reason they were brought in. So it, I think it'll give you a little bit better idea of where your animals are coming from or the reasons they're coming in, and, and then what happens with them, so. Anything that's redeemed back by owners, you know, so you'll see that.
But you'll pick up no animals after five o'clock?
Our contract is just through, Monday through Friday till five o'clock. I mean, if that's something you guys want us to do, I mean, we're open to discussing that. But keep in mind, you know, then I have to pay somebody to be on call, so then the cost goes up. I mean, I think that's the reason we negotiated that years ago to begin with is because of the cost. So kind of, I, I think at one point, we used to do that because the city of Waterloo paid us to be on call twenty-four seven. So then, kind of basically, what we did is since there was somebody on call, we just kind of gave you that service at no additional cost, since we already had somebody on call. We charged you to pick up the animal, but we didn't charge you to have a person on call because the city of Cedar Falls and Waterloo both, they paid us to do that. Well, then, when the city themselves took that over, then they, then they, we don't have anybody that goes out. I mean, we don't go out into the city of Cedar Falls or Waterloo at all. They have animal control, so. So then for us, it's like, well, for us to have somebody on call for that once every couple of months time to go out and after five o'clock, I mean, that, that's just a lot of money, I would think, to pay somebody to be on call for that. And if the county wants us to do that, I mean, we, we definitely could consider that. I just think it would be kind of costly. I don't know if it would be more, I don't know if the city animal control would, if that's something they would do for you guys after hours or not.
Any further questions?
No, I, I would just say, it sounds like maybe doing just a one-year contract is a good idea right now. But then, but I would also be interested in seeing, seeing a proposal from the Cedar Men Humane Society on a targeted catch, neuter, and release program. And also, I'd be interested in maybe a couple, a few times, doing a spade and neuter reduce fee kind of blitz. And see if, you know, whether that would reduce some of these numbers in the long run.
Yeah, it, it has reduced overall our numbers, you know, since we've done it, not just for your county, but if you look at our statistics, how many cats come in, our T and R program has, has reduced the number of those cats. We do advertise that on a regular basis. You know, if there's anything that you guys can think of, or, you know, we can talk with our marketing team, you know, to directly target, you know, the county. But, you know, I definitely would be open to those discussions because I think there's a lot of things that we could do as far as T and R and community cat program that would really help reduce the, the cat population in your, in your county. It would reduce the expense that you have to pay for all the cats that are hauled in here. It would reduce the amount of cats sitting in our shelter. And it would kind of put the responsibility back on, you know, the pet owners a little bit, or the, the, you know, the people that have the barn cats and stuff, so. I definitely would be open to some discussions with that. You know, even the city of Waterloo, you know, they're, like I said, we're going into a community cat program with them, and, you know, we've reduced the cost of each cat that we can do at a community cat, as a community cat, opposed to a cat we have to hold for them, because all we do is alter it and turn it back out. We don't have to hold it, so. So that could be some cost savings for you guys also.
Tim, I made that motion correct?
You did.
I will amend it to indicate a one-year contract.
Second.
Ending July, or ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, then?
Yes.
Just for clarification, that's with the one percent increase for that year, right? That, that was with the original motion?
Mm-hmm.
Is everyone clear on that?
Yep.
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Thank you. This is a resolution at the Iowa County Engineers Association's application for funding for safe streets and roads for all grant on behalf of the ninety-nine counties in Iowa, including Blackhawk County, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
Second.
Moving seconding. Catherine?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to explain this. So this is part of that, that federal funding that's becoming available from the IIJA bill, the federal reauthorization from last year. And the federal government is putting out grants through these notices of funding opportunities, so they're targeting different programs. In this case, they're targeting safety, so Safe Streets for All. The acronym is SS4A. There's billions of dollars available to, in this program throughout the next four to five years, the life of the bill. First request for applications is due September fifteenth. The Iowa County Engineers Association, we think it's to our advantage to work together and submit an application from all ninety-nine counties. This resolution with your recommendation is, is doing that. We are asking that we get our local road safety plan updated. As part of receiving this funding, an agency must have a current local road safety plan, and you must be selecting projects from that local road safety plan. We're hoping to receive money for this, for these local road safety plans this time, and then maybe next year start being able to select projects off of individual counties' local road safety plan. So this, this resolution would, you know, would give your support for this program. Can I answer any other questions about this?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Don't hear any questions, so. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution at the agreement received from Tallgrass Archaeology LLC, Iowa City, Iowa, for architectural, historical, intensive survey and evaluation on the Bennington Road Bridge over the Wapsik Pennington River in Blackhawk County with a bid of two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconding.
So as part of being able to do anything with this bridge, and if you recall, this is a bridge up on East Bennington Road that's been closed for five years now. Before we can tear it down or remodel it or whatever we want to do to it, we need to have an archaeological study done. The Corps of Engineers would require, is requiring us to do that. We did solicit three proposals from throughout Iowa. This Tallgrass Archaeology from Iowa City, they are the low bid, so I would recommend that you sign this contract, and they be allowed to begin their study. They should have the results back by the end of, within three or four weeks, I believe, is what they indicated.
Any questions? Hearing on this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation for a bridge federal aid project on Pointer Road over Indian Creek with an estimated cost of nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second. Moving seconding. Catherine?
So this is just part of our routine project development for this Pointer Road Bridge that is being replaced, scheduled to be replaced next year. It is on Pointer Road just east of Gilbertville. Mike Trainon did review the agreement and was fine with it. And this, the agreement says that we will follow the DOTs, all the regulations and rules to receive federal, to receive swap funds.
Any questions? Hearing on this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is other businesses. The motion, direct to county auditor, to advertise for a public hearing. Bid opening, we held at nine oh five on Tuesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Boardroom two oh one of Blackhawk County Courthouse on a proposed purchase of one single actual dump truck and one tandem actual dump truck for Blackhawk County's Engineers Department.
Second.
Moved in seconding. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is discussion, possible board action, funding for family and children's council, community services application.
I'm going to recuse myself from this particular one because they've asked me to rejoin the board.
Couldn't wait it a little longer for you. Okay.
Thoughts on this one? Tom, Chris?
Sorry, James, could you just overview the total amount that we've allocated or allotted for this and are for community services, and then each individual amount requested?
Yeah, absolutely. Right now, we have allocated a hundred thousand dollars out of our fund balance, which is our general fund. And out of those requests, we've received a request from Family and Children's Council for an amount of ten thousand. If, excuse me. Focus on diabetes, or Focus on Diabetes has requested twenty-five thousand. Grossier Valley has requested fifty thousand. Northeast Iowa Food Bank has requested fifty thousand. Operation Threshold has requested twenty thousand. And finally, River View Center has requested fifty-six thousand five hundred. If you total all those, we are at two hundred and eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you, James.
I will say I did follow up and talk to Amanda regarding the importance of, you know, safe sleep, sleep spaces and traveling homes for children. I asked her particularly why she was requesting ten thousand dollars and how she came to that amount, and, and she said that they had lost a large donor in the last year, so they were just trying to replace funds, so she would be appreciative of, she knew that just because they'd requested funding didn't mean that they were guaranteed funding, and they appreciated being considered. But if there was anything we could do to help their organization in the baby safety program, it was appreciated.
So do you have a suggestion?
I don't know. I could make a motion, or I would suggest, I guess I'd like discussion from others if there's anyone. I would make a motion to support five thousand dollars contribution to Family and Children's Council for this program.
I'll second.
Is that you, Chris?
It was both Tom and I said.
Tandem.
Okay. Okay, a motion on the floor for five thousand dollars for funding for Family and Children's Council. Any further discussion? Hearing on this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
I'll recuse myself.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Next is possible board action, discussion on funding for Focus on Diabetes Community Services application. For twenty-five thousand, right, James?
Correct. I'll make a motion for five thousand dollars since they have established a dialogue with Public Health Department on addressing this issue and others.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on this one. Any further discussion? Any questions, any concerns?
I did follow up on this one as well. I said, because it was a new program to us, and I was very curious to ask Bridget, who was most forward with all of her information, that they were requesting twenty-five thousand dollars for their program, and in turn, they were creating a program for twenty-five thousand dollars. So I had asked, knowing that the board doesn't always fund people for their total request, and because this was a new program, what they would be doing with the funding were a different amount than the twenty-five thousand. And she mentioned that as they're doing this as a collaborative effort, as we all know with University of Iowa and Iowa Cancer Consortium, that the survey that they were going to be doing possibly wouldn't be done and ready to do until next year, almost a year from now. And so some of the things that they had in that program wouldn't be even started in fiscal year twenty-three. But there is something they've been doing for seven years. They, they have been having an awareness event at the Center for the Arts. And so there are some things that they do for free screenings and that type of thing. So I thought there were some excellent things that they're doing in outreach in the community and trying to hit as many people as they can, and doing a service, I guess, to all of us. And now they're expanding that a little bit to be more for prostate cancer screenings and not just diabetes screenings. But they certainly, I'm sure, could use the money. I was just thinking, too, and I had a question for Mike. As we, I think, started this new process and this really invoicing request from businesses after they've completed the services, if there were services not done in the year for some of these things, then I'm assuming we wouldn't pay on those.
That's correct.
So it wouldn't be that we just give the money, so, much like we did before.
The money must be paid for services that advance, that advance the, the public purposes that have been identified by this board.
So if we did do something like a five thousand dollar contribution, and they were unable to utilize that in, in the ways they thought, from the surveying and the research and that type of thing, I just, I don't want them in a bad predicament either, is what I was thinking. So I did want to make some type of contribution. I just not sure if five thousand, I think, might be a little high with them being a first-time user, and this is all volunteer-based. This isn't a 501(c)(3) or a private business. This is done by volunteers, and my hats, yeah, they should be commended for all the work they're doing just as volunteers and not being paid staff. So I, I think, like I said, I'd love to see it supported. I'm not sure I'd support five thousand at this point in time, but I, maybe I could, too, if you can convince me of otherwise.
Any other discussion?
Chris, do you know anything about this company or this organization?
Yeah, I, I'll say that. I've, I've been to the Focus on Diabetes Awareness Event most years that they've had it, and it, it really is impressive that that they've had it. And it really is impressive, the collaboration that they, that they do. You know, they've got all sorts of partners in there. They are offering free foot exams. You can do a blood sugar test and as well as, you know, just providing general information and awareness about diabetes. And so I think it's, I have kind of good faith in their track record with that event that, that they would be doing something pretty valuable with prostate cancer.
Well, maybe we could, and maybe the $5,000 would be something we could do, but since it's, like I say, to be invoicing them, I mean, they'll be providing, I guess, an invoice of services done. Then if they are done, great, we'd go ahead with the $5,000. If not.
And I think this is consistent with what's been done actually in prior years, which is that boards always had the ability to ask how the money has been used. The invoicing would state that presumably.
One of my questions is regarding this to, she had listed in her program budget participation incentives of free haircuts and gift cards. And I could have misunderstood, but my question to her was, was that for the people to come in and get screenings? Or, you know, and try to attract people? And, and she said, no, that was typically used probably to gather volunteers, to try to get volunteers to help with this too. So I didn't know if that was something the county has to look into legally, if we can do that type of, you know, when it's to recruit volunteers, if we can use taxpayers' dollars for that type of service or we should stay away from it. I just thought, I want to be sure that they are not in trouble nor us.
I know, and I would need to, I would need to do further research on that specific question. I know in the past, the county has utilized, I believe it was non, may have been non-tax dollars, may have been grant dollars to incentivize, for example, a vaccination for COVID-19. But I would need to look further into whether there are any legalities involved in doing that to recruit volunteers for an organization, perhaps consult with the state auditor on that.
And maybe that would be something we could just mention to them is, if we did go ahead with the funding and then just not, if, if that's so, you know, as it comes out that we shouldn't do, I just use it for other costs.
I was going to say, I think it'd be safer to use it for, to specify in the motion that it would be used for services and specify in the contract that it would be used for services, not for recruitment efforts.
Right.
Because our, our funding can't be a donation.
No.
Because technically, they're not volunteers then. They're getting paid.
Getting paid.
Because they're getting something back for what they're doing.
Yeah, it's kind of a gray area because they're, they're sort of getting a prize for it, but they're not getting a wage.
Well, no, but.
Yeah.
Haircuts, aren't you? Neither is gift cards. So I have a motion on the floor, a first and a second. Any further discussion for $5,000?
What's the motion then?
$5,000.
And we amend it to, that it has to be for, like, I guess, the events that they do and not the, not the volunteer?
We're going to get a report from them, right? That, that would cover it. I guess that wouldn't have to be in the motion.
It's fine with me.
You're going to do the same thing for everybody then.
Just so it's clear, they're the people that are doing it so they don't turn it in after the fact.
Well, it sounds like they've been doing great things because diabetes is a serious situation here in the United States, I think, if I recall.
Does our, pardon me? Does our health department do any of that type of screening?
No, in fact, that's what Bridget met with Caitlin and they talked about how they could work together with our health department, but that said that, no, we don't do any of those types of screenings. So if there was anything, they could try to work together to get the word out and help her with her program and, you know, acknowledge, like, say, what our role could be in getting the word out for her September event every year. I know she said she usually does that word of mouth and putting out posters and things like that and social media. And so I'm assuming, like, she could use all the help she could get probably for that, trying to get the marketing done and that, so. But to answer your question, Tom, no, they, they'll work together as partners, but no, we don't really do any screening.
So this group isn't a 501(c)(3) though, right?
Correct, correct. Just volunteers.
Have they applied for 501(c)(3) statement?
I doubt it because I think they're just trying to do everything they can that, from a volunteer standpoint, to supplement efforts.
I think we might have better luck if they went after a 501(c)(3), myself, but.
Yeah, and they could, although now with this contract for services, we don't have to just do, have.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct.
Services with that.
501(c) organizations.
Does the contract actually say they have to be a 501(c)(3)?
No.
No.
The application?
No.
No.
Okay.
We, that did get changed.
So I have a motion on the floor for $5,000, right? And I have a second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I thought you asked for a second.
No, he said he had one.
I have a second.
You have a second.
Yes, you did.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland? Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trulka?
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, discussion, possible board action, funding for Cedar Val, Rose Cedar Valley's Community Services Application.
I'm going to recuse myself since I'm a member and I recently purchased a business, a business that is going to be involved with Rose Cedar Valley.
Road cutting?
Anything girls want to say? You got a fundraiser committee?
We have a Director of Investor Relations, I'm sorry, Lisa Scooball, Rose Cedar Valley. We have a Director of Investor Relations who works full-time on staff that works with our current investors, but also recruits new ones as well. So we're here to talk about our services. Any questions you have from our presentation last month as well as our application?
Right.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any suggestions? And they're asking for $50,000, right, James?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I probably should be upfront too. I said, I know this has been difficult for me and I know when we've had the people that have withdrawn because, or recuse yourself because of the relationship. I think I'll abstain for the same reason. As everybody probably knows, I've worked there for 25 years. I have friends there. I have good friends there. And I see that somewhat as a conflict of interest. But, yeah, I guess, I'm sorry.
I think maybe, it looks like maybe we should go back to that committee we had before because we talked about this last week, James, that we, on every one of these, we could recuse ourselves because we've had relationships with people, if we're going down to that point. I could, I've sat on Family and Children's Council. I've been on Northeast Iowa Food Bank, so I'd have to excuse myself from them, but I didn't see a conflict because I'm open-minded.
I'm seeing one for working there for 25 years, not just because I know the people.
I worked at Deers for 25 years and I wouldn't have a problem voting on someone.
For Deers, you mean?
That's right.
Well, that's up to you. This is up to me.
I know. I'm just stating my opinion.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be for, to go back to a committee like we did before, make this a lot easier. There wouldn't be any recusing needed to be done.
Oh, I did ask that a few weeks ago, as you know, that was kind of like to make it a little more straightforward and transparent.
Right.
But I, there was no appetite for it at the time, so I guess I thought we'd go ahead with this one. And if we want to change it for the next cycle, we do.
Let's just go through these. They've been on there, I don't know how many times we've talked about it. Just go through these, approve or disapprove, and then we have a whole year to talk about creating a committee or whatever at budget time.
I move we give them $50,000. Based on what I know about it.
Never mind. I abstained anyway. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Any, any suggestion? Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, I would just, I'd be curious what they, if they could comment on what they would do with lesser amount of funding.
Carrie Dara, Rose Cedar Valley CEO. So with lesser funding, we would continue with the workforce options and we just delineated those in the budget. So we would do the best we could with the amount that you dedicated towards that. I would like to include, though, that recently we've had conversations with Evansdale and LaPorte City. We are going to be doing some contract for services, not really contract for services, but BRE services for them on working on extending the business retention expansion program with their businesses. So I know it's important to this group that we reach out to the rural communities, which we have, and we've got great relationships with them. So while we'll continue to serve the water Cedar Falls area, of course, we know that it's important that we strengthen our rural partners around, around our area too, and we'll continue to do that.
So Evansdale's considered rural?
Pardon me?
Evansdale's considered.
Smaller, maybe not rural, but smaller. I mean, we know it's important.
So are you guys responsible for CFCC that's going up out there? The building that's going up out there?
Lisa's been working with the mayor of Evansdale and some of their other staff people.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Little? Mr. Schwartz? Suggestions? Thoughts?
I would offer a motion for, what was, you offered a motion for $50,000, right, Craig?
Yes, sir.
I would offer one for 15.
15, 1.5?
Yeah, 1.5.
Mr. Little? Thoughts?
Well, I've had some concerns because, as I indicated to the board, the board has passed in the last couple of years, some proclamations and letters of support to the state. And I noticed that the Cedar Valley Grow or Cedar Valley Alliance, if that's what they're called at the end, kind of come out against it, of what we were doing. And that's fine. I don't have a problem with that, but I, it's, I just don't know if I'm in favor of any funding at this time.
When you, Carrie Dara, again, when you speak about support to state applications, I know that, I guess, unless you're specific about what issues that we came out possibly against, I don't know that we actively do that. As far as the requests we've gotten from area projects and initiatives that was required or asked for our support, we've always, to my knowledge, we've always followed up to get more information and then provide that letter of support. So I'm not quite sure specifically what you're, what you're talking about, Mr. Little.
Thank you, Ms. Dara. Tom, you got any further explanation on that?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, so we've got $15,000 and a $50,000 on the floor and I'll go, I'll go down to 25. Chris?
All right, I'll, I'll second your motion.
All right. We've got, we've got a motion on the floor for $25,000. And we have a motion and a second, so this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trulka?
Recuse myself.
Layland?
Recuse.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next?
No, it's not adopted.
Pardon me?
It's not adopted. It was a 2-1 vote.
Oh, that's right. No, the 2, 2 recuse. See, that's why we.
Yeah.
So that one dies, I guess. Discussion, possible board action, funding for Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Community Service Application.
I'll make a motion for $20,000.
I'm going to recuse myself. I used to sit on it.
I'll second that motion. All right. And I just want to just highlight all the hard work that the food bank has done, especially as we saw the pandemic, how critical they became and they were seeing people come in for the first time ever. Sometimes seeing people at once volunteer there, utilizing their services. And as SNAP benefits have been rolled back again, it's just a critical, critical service in our community. Unfortunately, I'm, I am an ex officio, a non-voting member of the board, so I will have to recuse myself for this. But I would, if I was able to, I'd support their full request.
So do we have an amount on the floor, $20,000, right?
Yes.
And we have a motion and a second, right? And we have three. So all three, all three of us will have to go for the 20.
If it's a resolution, please answer. Your name is called.
Schwartz?
Abstain.
Trulka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White.
Abstain. That passes. Discussion, possible board action, Operation Threshold for $20,000.
I'll make a motion for $10,000.
Second.
Second, in case you didn't hear me, Tom.
Any further discussion? Any questions? Chris?
I am a voting board member of Operation Threshold, but just again, I want to highlight their critically important work from keeping people's utilities on to getting, you know, mothers signed up for WIC and everything else. They work really hard. And if I'm able to, I'd support their full request.
As we all do. Yeah, thank you, Chris.
And I think they were looking at a new service too, of water heater replacement and repair and garbage services, trying to help people with those so they didn't get their services shut off. So, yeah. And Barb mentioned, and I just happened to note down, that 80% of their budget goes to people, helping the people. So that's commendable.
But keep in mind, we do currently.
Support them.
Have a contract with them, don't we? Yeah.
Contract with them through Community Services, which goes for heat assistance and so forth.
Yes. Yes, this was different, so I liked that. Thank you.
I have a motion on the floor for $10,000. I have a motion and a second. And this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Trulka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Abstain.
White.
Abstain. Discussion, possible board action, funding for River View Center's Community Services Application.
What was their request for River View? Their request was for $56,500. I'll make a motion for $15,000.
I was going to say, just add to that too. I did follow up with them as well. One of the questions I'd asked is about that request for $56,500 and why that amount or how they came to that amount. And Goian said she had looked at our information and wasn't sure exactly what we wanted to fund and the types of funding that we did. So what she did was just list their budget. They'd had a 22% decrease from state with their budget. And she just said, so this is our budget loss this year and what we want to try to recover. So that wasn't that they really needed the 50, or expected the 56.5, but something, so. Did you get a second for that?
Not yet.
Oh, all right. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floor for, what was that, James?
15.
15,000.
And they were also going to be targeting the rural areas. This was a new program for them. So that was something they said only 2% of the people in remote areas experience sexual trauma report. So that was something they're going to strive to improve on.
Yeah, some of it's duplication of services. But there's a lot that needs to be done on all those fields.
Well, I did ask them about duplication of services specifically, Craig, because I know that's always important to us. And they said, they are the only accredited comprehensive sexual assault advocacy agency in Blackhawk County. And this was by design when the Attorney General regionalized the services in 2013. And they said, while they partner with other agencies who are funded to provide housing for survivors or provide services like theirs, they are the only agency to do what they do in the county. All of their services, medical, legal, and general advocacy, therapy, violence prevention, education are 100% free as mandated by our service standards. So all of us could get, take advantage of that was great.
I stand corrected. I thought there was other services for sexual abuse here in Blackhawk County. I think Family and Children's Council has some.
Oh, they do. They work together with them. Like they said, run the housing and stuff. They do that, but just not all the services that they provide.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. I have a motion on the floor for fifteen thousand, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trulka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted.
Chair? Sorry, I, I do just want to make note that we are at a total allocated dollar amount of fifty-five thousand of the one hundred thousand. So if you did want to, I mean, there's, there's, there's one organization left and there's forty-five thousand dollars left, so, um.
There is one organization left?
Rose Cedar Valley.
Oh, you mean one that we didn't?
Correct.
Well, we do that every year. I mean, every year, we don't necessarily use the money. So you mean like we could make a decision later this year?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying of the hundred thousand dollars that we budgeted for the, uh, community services, fifty-five thousand dollars has been utilized between all of the other organizations outside of Rose Cedar Valley. Uh, and that dollar amount is fifty-five thousand that we've allocated. So if you subtract the fifty-five from the one hundred, we're at forty-five thousand dollars, so, um.
I know. But we took action.
We already took action on that, Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, thank you.
Any reports or information from the board? Thank you, James.
I would just say, maybe we could be open to a, a second round of applications later in the year for the remaining amount.
Sounds good to me, Chris. Any reports or information from the board? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.